Thank you all for coming. It's great to see so many of our students with us. Very excited for tonight's meeting. And I am going to ask at this time for Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act Statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
May we have roll call?
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Delabarga?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd is absent. Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Can we all please stand and salute the flag, please?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Is there anyone that wants to sit? We do have some chairs, you know, that we can sort of... Is everybody all right? I mean, I don't want to, you know... Everybody good? Okay. All right. Well, we won't keep you... We won't keep you too long. All right. So again, welcome to our November business meeting. It's great to see a room full of especially so many students. It's great to see you, and I recognize some of our teachers and staff here as well. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to our superintendent, Dr. Gruccio, who has a superintendent's report and a number of other things to report out on this evening.
Okay, well, welcome everyone, and I echo Mr. Castellano. It's great to see a room full of students and teachers, but we're here to celebrate, and that's what it's about, student achievement and the great things that go on in our school. So just give me a few minutes so I can brag about what's going on in our school district. I'd appreciate that. I know Tyler is wanting to use my...
Hello? Hello? Do I have to repeat all that? You're good. All right. All right. So in terms of student achievement, what's going on in our school district is the first marking period has come to a conclusion, all right? So just to alert all the parents, you might want to go on the parent portal and see how your kiddies are doing and the update on their performance, but I assure you, everyone's having a good time and hopefully doing well academically. Our Silver Eagle marching band attended the Atlantic Coast Championships and brought home a fourth-place finish, and they're doing very, very well. They're rocking the stands, and we're very, very proud of them. Professional development occurred this past week amongst our administrative staff in the area of equity, and they received a two-hour training on Monday. The Brain Bowl was held at the St. Augustine Preparatorial School, and our middle schools' teams attended and did very well. We had our CIEE Study Abroad Fair, which occurred this past week, and as you know, our students go overseas to study in the summer, and it's a great experience. So we had parents and students attend that, and Dr. Schreiner led that the other night. We had college signing, early signings. Our athletic department featured this on our social media and set up something at the high school in the gym where parents and students could show off their acceptance into colleges. And our Cape Atlantic League champions who are here tonight, and you'll meet them a little later. Good job. On the climate and culture, which is another student learning goal, a district learning goal, we celebrate American Education Week this week. So we celebrate education, we celebrate our teachers and staff, and the great things that go on in our schools and nationwide in terms of education. Veterans Day, we had celebrations and researches that went on in our classrooms. We have a month of gratitude that this month of November, Thanksgiving. We are very grateful for the things that go on. We're very grateful for the support of our Board of Education and the great programs that we have here in Egg Harbor Township School District. Red Ribbon Week was honored. Respect the Bus at Davenport, there's a program going on there. Students are honored when they do great things on the bus, and the bus driver sends a name to the principal, and the administration, teachers recognize the students for good behavior on the bus, all right? And it's National French Week was celebrated in our school district. Regarding community partners, our students are involved in food and clothing drives, and they're going to help those in need during Thanksgiving holiday, so that's a great thing. Project Graduation tickets are on sale, and the drawing is on November 24th. Correct?
Tickets are sold out.
Tickets are sold out. I was going to tell you, I got my check, all right. And Noche Latina was held this last couple of weeks ago, and it's a great community outreach where Dr. Schreiner and Jenny Dilks collaborate with Latino families, and this... The focus this past month was to get them acquainted with the district and the things that we do in terms of our website and the parent portal. So it's very, very helpful to us all. Update on COVID-19 and our school district, we just held a vaccination clinic at the Miller School yesterday, and the follow-up shots will be on December 6th. Testing is occurring for unvaccinated and vaccinated, anyone who wants to get tested. I'll be doing that tomorrow, Rover Labs. It's held on Wednesdays here in the district. Our pandemic team meetings will be occurring within the next couple of weeks. So we have administrators' meeting tomorrow. We're going to talk about pandemic team meetings where they are going to revisit what's going on in the district in terms of... We'll start with cases, with caseload, what talks about the things that we do in terms of the dust yields, the cleaning. So we always, every couple of months, gather and talk about what's going on, how it's set up. So we revisit what we do, we'll review what we do, and then if we need to revise anything based on stakeholder input, those stakeholders are students, parents, teachers, staff, administration. Okay? And the health affirmation form, we continuously remind folks that it's important to fill out that affirmation form, and bottom line, if you're not feeling well, please do not come to school or work. Our district cases at this point, the total staff and students are 247, 57 staff members, 190 students. In the past 14 days, we've had 19 cases, and I give that update every superintendent report, okay? Job opportunities, a push here to help Dr. Charlton and HR Department. We are in need of bus drivers. We are in need of bus aides, power professionals, substitute teachers, parers, cafeteria workers, and nurses. We're in need of a supervisor of English and language arts. Our art and bridge program teachers for the high school, special education math, the school counselor needed at Fernwood Avenue Middle School, and a speech-language therapist who are needed too in the district. So if you know anybody who's certified, interested, spread the word. Help us spread the word. Got to fill those holes here in the district. Fine and Performing Arts, here's a push for them. November 19th and 20th, Matilda Jr. will occur at Fernwood Avenue Middle School, so go on out and support your friends, support your children, support the Fine and Performing Arts Department. And then again, at the high school is another opportunity to get out there and be entertained when you can see Legally Blonde between December 2nd and 5th. All right, just giving update to as what we're doing in terms of Budget '22, '23. I had to think a minute when I wrote that down. Gosh, '22, '23. But yes, we are preparing for the '22, '23 school year. And how that works is Central Office releases a budgeting calendar, and we begin with meeting with different departments, with principals, and having discussions with administration so we can see what the needs are based on what the input is from their school communities. And then we present the board with that information, and that happens in the new year. But right now, what we're doing is that internal process. We'll be meeting with contentary supervisors. Those contentary supervisors and directors will have presentations in the new year to the Board of Education, and then we'll build the budget from there. So that's how that works. Okay, here we go. It's what we're here for tonight, and that is students, all right? So we're going to begin with the Egg Harbor Township High School field hockey team, and if I can have the athletic director, his is... Come on up here. By the way, this is our new athletic director, Mr. Kevin Rutledge, okay? And he's going to stand up here with me and brag about how well our student athletes performed this year. We'll begin with the field hockey team, and if the coach, Coach Troster, can come up here with your crew, and I'll turn that over to Kevin, as they are Cape Atlantic League American Division co-champions.
This just shows how great of a team they are. All she said was tall people in the back, and look at this. Five, 10 seconds? Ladies, so as my first year here in Egg Harbor Township, I heard a lot about this program. You know, it's something that I came out, and I knew that you guys were going to be good, but when I came out, the one thing that impressed me game in and game out was the class and character that you possess, okay? That's something that you're going to take with you, you know, long after you leave our doors, but I hope you guys understand that that doesn't happen without the leadership of Coach Troster. And what she does and what she brings to y'all, I hope you can take everything with you and understands the values that she has possessed, has passed along to you, all right? Thanks, Coach Troster.
Thank you, everybody, and congratulations to boys soccer as well. We had a really awesome fall at EHT High School. I want to thank all the girls and all the parents that are here because this is a total team effort, and my two coaches, Coach Sabotten and Coach Marshall, they're also a huge part of what we do. So this has been six years in the coming, and four years for the seniors up here wanting to beat Ocean City, and this year it finally happened. For those of you that are... (Applause) For those of you that are not in the field hockey world, this has been the third loss in the division/conference total that they've had over the last like 12 years. So before that, I don't know how many we've gotten, but, you know, to be their third loss, I'll take that right now. So I'm very proud of the girls. In addition, we had four first-team Cape Atlantic League All-Stars, so Emily Gargan, Rebecca Machia, Anna Smith, and Jenna Gray. Jenna Gray was also nominated to the second-team All-South Jersey that just came out today, so very proud of her. And then the Atlantic City Press stuff is still coming, but we had six nominees to go towards their teams as well. So thank you so much to the district and the board. It was truly a very supportive year. I really felt that way between the community, the other athletes, the school. It just felt like for once we kind of had everything together, and everybody was supporting us, and that's a really big deal, I think, for success going forward. So thank you again to everybody behind us, in front of us, and everywhere else. Thank you so much. Oh, Lar... Coach Lar Sabotten. Coach Marshall. Miss Jessie Alkins. Kelly Bratus. Oh, shoot. Cherzek. Olivia Desher. I think they had a family, I think, to a 10. Dakota Dix. Ava Fortucci. Emily Gargan. Jenna Gray. Gabrielle Hildner. Addison Jacobs. Breann Machia. Rebecca Machia. Emma Marjol. Ella Meisenhelter. Elizabeth, I didn't know her name was Elizabeth Seymour until right now. Ella. Anna Smith. Amanda Swisher. Kara Wilson. Billy Zappelli. And Kirsten Zinkraff.
Ladies, thank you again for an incredible season.
All right, next up, we'd like to recognize boys soccer for their Cal championship as well as their division/conference championship. So one of the first people to reach out to me when I got the position was Coach Lambert, and as a person in leadership, what I'm looking for is someone with passion, and when I saw the email from Coach, the first thing I noticed was, this guy's all about EHT. Wasn't a little bit later until I realized that the profile picture that he has with Mighty the Eagle is also his wife, so I was a little confused at that, but again, I wasn't wrong because coming out to practices, coming out to, you know, the games, he's all about Egg Harbor Township, and it shows, and it shows the way the kids play. Every minute, every second, these kids are given everything they got, and it starts with the coaching leadership that we have up here, and I couldn't be more proud of you guys.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Mr. Rutledge, Dr. Gruccio, the board event for having us out here tonight, administration, our assistant athletic director, Ms. Perron, our school principal, Ms. Connor, and everyone here tonight. You know, the support we have throughout the township, kind of piggyback Coach Troster has been outstanding over the years. I'm very fortunate to be a part, you know, of EHT. I am super proud of EHT. There's no doubt about it. We wear it on our back that we want to play, and for myself to coach with passion, you know, have purpose and pride. So this team right here certainly had it this year. I mean, we definitely exceeded all expectations that many people had for our team. These boys bought into what we were trying to do. You know, they bought into our game plan each and every day. They trained hard, you know, and we won some pretty big games. Pretty exciting to hold this trophy here in front of everyone tonight. It's been a long time coming. In fact, it's been 10 years since we last won the Cape Atlantic League Conference, but I have to say, none of this is possible without these two guys behind me, and that's Coach Heenan and Coach Matori. And Mr. Rutledge, I thank you for the kind words. Yes, I do have a lot of passion for EHT, but these guys are born and bred EHT alumni, very passionate to give back to the community, to the school that they graduated from, and I'm very excited, and I cannot thank them enough for the amount of energy and time that they put in for this program. I'm not here without them. At the same time, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, she's at home probably watching, Mighty. She's been by my side, my rock, the whole time. No one has more energy or more support for this program and this township than my wife, Michelle, so if you're at home watching or driving the kids from practice, I thank you as well. So, you know, just to touch on the year real quick and not talk too much, but we, you know, we called ourselves by the end of the year, the Avengers. We had three really tough losses in the beginning of the year, and we were able later in the year to avenge all three losses, so that was pretty exciting. To get into the Cape Atlantic League playoff was even better, you know, because we had to face the number-one seed. I can't remember who we played... Oh, the Prep, I guess they're around here somewhere. Apparently, they're, you know, the team to beat, and there's no doubt about it. We've become a pretty special rivalry between the Prep and ourselves, so being the number four, them the number one, and to go to their place and come from behind and get the result was really, really exciting for myself, my coaching staff, the boys, and the community. And then to go on and avenge another loss that we had earlier in the year at Hamilton, to win the whole thing, and that picture is from Hamilton, was even, you know, more special. So each and every year, we set goals for the program and for each player, and we always want to try to win the conference, so we were able to achieve that. We always want to make the playoffs. We were able to get there as well and get invited to the coaches tournament, which is a pretty special honor to get invited to. We hung with the number-one team in South Jersey at the time in Clearview, which just couldn't get the result. So, you know, my hat off, my mask off to you guys. You know, I love you all. Those of you who are moving on and graduating, I wish you the best, but again, this is not possible without my coaching staff, without the community, without the parents, without the support of the administration. I thank you all. Just real quick, to announce our players who are here tonight, we do have a few who are not. Some are training, some are out of town, but Alex Adair. Christian Alvarez, don't know if I saw him here. Ricky Axelson. Ryan Bailey. Goalie Brett Barnes. Evan Bevelacqua. Just real quick, Henry was one of our captains, one of three captains this year, senior, all-conference player, and just recently awarded all-state honors as well. Ryan Evenson. Brian Jerran. Jackson Griffith. Jackson, also senior, was also our September Player of the Month. Lucas Lainez is not here. I don't believe Jaden is here either. Jaden Lodge. Dominic Manzo. Is he here? Another senior goalie, or our only senior goalie, Nicholas Aaron. Joseph Joey Martin. Chase Mazur. Ty, where you at, Ty? Ty Rosas. Donovan Sullivan. Senior captain, All-South Jersey, All-Cape Atlantic League, and All-State player, Dominic Nuch. We also had, we were fortunate to have a transfer this season, came up big with a lot of, you know, critical goals, and we look forward to having him back, and that is one Jude Urban. And again, I'd like to thank Coach Dennis Heenan. Coach Philip Matori. Again, thank you all. Thank you to these guys, our seniors, senior field hockey players. We wish you the best moving forward. Congratulations as well, all right? And, you know, go EHT.
Just a few quick words, and I'm going to hold you just for two minutes so you can see a video, but I want to congratulate both the field hockey team and the boys soccer team for your efforts, for your championship, but most of all, for your dedication, not only to your sport and to your coaches, but to Egg Harbor Township High School. You are a true example of EHT pride. You're a true example of those who go that extra, all right? And those who go that extra and work hard end up being champions. So congratulations. We're very, very proud of you. Continue the pride, continue to strive to be the best that you can be, whatever you do. You hold that trophy there. I see he's gleaming underneath that mask, and you deserve that, and hold on to it tight, pass it on, enjoy it, enjoy the moments, and it goes down as a memory. And thank you to the parents who support them, who drive them to and from practice, because, yep, you know, it's Monday through Friday, but people don't understand, it's Saturdays and Sundays too, right? And it's late nights, and it's homework that you have to do. Oh, I got to get that done, and come in and be a student, and be a student that does well in order to participate. So I thank you. It's really, really appreciated. You are examples. You are great examples, and just continue. And coaches, thank you for your time. Thank you for being with our students each and every day, and that's why we're all here for the kids. So again, I thank you. This is a great night, and it is very exciting to me. So I thank you for taking the time to come out here and be recognized. Thank you. (Applause) Before you go, just want you to have an idea of what we do here in board meetings. I go through the district learning goals, but I also give a visual, because I am a visual person, and these videos each month capture the great things that go on in our school district, the great things that we need to be proud about, the great things that make us EHT and make us different from others. Thank you, Tyler, who assists us each month with capturing all the great things that go on, and I think it's so important that we recognize we are so huge as a school district, and some of us are caught up in our field hockey world, our soccer world, our high school world, our middle school world, elementary world, but we are so huge, and we are comprehensive pre-K to 12 and beyond. We do so many, many things here to be proud of. Are we perfect every day? No, but we strive to be. And the example I gave of these champions standing up right here, I consider our school district a championship school district. So thank you all. I appreciate your attendance tonight. The young folks, I know you have homework to do, so if you would like to leave the boardroom at this time, we will not be offended. If you need time to celebrate, go on and do so. Okay, we have a very brief presentation on Unified Sports, just to serve as a refresher for the Board of Education to learn about what Unified Sports are, and what our plan is moving forward. It'll be slow steps as we begin to implement this program here in our school district, and Mr. Rutledge, our Athletic Director, Ms. Perone, our Assistant Athletic Director, have been deeply involved in this process. Ms. Perone has made contact with Special Olympics and has been in conversation with them to become educated as to what exactly Unified Sports are. Mr. Rutledge, in his district in Baltimore, oversaw Unified Sports in the Athletic Department there. So without further ado, I want to turn the mic over to them, and they'll give us a brief summary of Unified Sports.
Now, I did hear brief several times. Guess the word's out on me. So, just quickly, you know, for about the last decade or so, my districts, I've been involved with Unified Sports, and it's an incredible endeavor. It's something that you really can't explain until you see it in person, but I'm gonna try and do my best today, or tonight I should say. So, long and short of it, Unified Programs join people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team as a unified athlete and partners, as they're referred to by the Special Olympics. So what we do is, we try to do, what we do is, we basically have varsity programs that are designated as Unified Sports. So what happens is, we'll have half of the student body with IEPs and 504s, and half the student body that are general ed students. And the whole goal and idea of this is to build inclusive communities, alright, and obviously, that's our goal as an educational system. Currently, over 6,500 schools are implementing Unified Programs, providing 8.2 million inclusive sports leadership and social experiences that bring students together as teammates, peers, and friends. Before each match, or game, or meet, their oath is said, "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt," and that is the Special Olympics oath that they will say before every single event that they have. Just a reminder, let them know why they're there, okay? Some of the data from that is pulled from nationwide, 82% of family members report that athletes improve their self-esteem after participating in Unified Sports. 79% of Unified Sports teammates without intellectual disabilities report increased understanding of people with intellectual disabilities. 94% of athletes and partners say Unified Sports made them healthier. 91% of athletes improved their sport skills. 83 and 85% of athletes reported having more friends without ID after participating in Unified Sports. Of the athletes reported exercising more every week as a result of Unified Sports participation conducted in five countries. So, what is it in New Jersey here? Now, we have our state athletic program, NJSI, what they do is they partner with the Special Olympics New Jersey, and what we have here is, there's a number of sports that they have partnered with, they have not partnered with all of them, meaning soccer, Unified Bowling, Basketball, Indoor and Outdoor Track and Field. So what that means is, there actually is state championships and culminating events for those programs, which is an incredible sight to see. There is 24 athletic programs available. So the first question I always get is, "Mr. Rutledge, what is the difference between a Unified Sport and a Varsity Program?" And quite frankly, not a lot, alright, the differences, the similarities, it's value-based athletic programs, teaching life lessons through sport, player development mentoring, and competition. That's all the same as we run in our general athletic programs. The difference is, it's a concentration on relationships and inclusion. Number of practices and events per week. Unified Sports will generally have two events, practices, games a week, as compared to the five or six practices or games a week that a Varsity Program would have, and of course, there's possible modifications to the rules and/or equipment when it's deemed necessary. Special Olympics supports 24 athletic programs, like I mentioned before, so something Ms. Perone has taken on quite a bit here in the last month or so, is going through the data to see what do we want to look at, what do we want to provide. So, obviously, the first thing that we have to look at is facilities. What can we offer? What is available to us? And one of the things that Mr. Coach Lambert alluded to earlier is the field space that we're about to have, that we did not have before. So that opens up a lot of avenues for us. Then we look at, like I said before, the New Jersey State sponsorships, so we can make sure that if there are end-of-the-year events, culminating events, that we can be participating in those as well. We have the ability to review and adapt as needed, but this was something that Ms. Perone, working with the Special Education Departments, talked with, in my experience, leaning on it to talk about what we can do, what we can offer for the best possible situation to roll this out. What is the Special Olympics, how do they support the school districts, okay? So, this is obviously one of the stronger points of their program. So, they have a Play Unified Partnership Grant. Special Olympics New Jersey has given over $2 million in grants to schools in 85 districts across the state. Recently, Ms. Perone was awarded 25, or Ms. Perone applied for and had the Egg Harbor Township District awarded $25,000 from the New Jersey Special Olympics. Coincidentally, this is a picture of Ms. Perone moments after speaking with the grant officer. So, right now, we have the funding in place with that $25,000 to fund our winter programs, and that includes Basketball, Bowling, a Newspaper Club, Unified Gaming Club, and Pickleball Intramurals. What does that pay for? Adaptive equipment, uniforms, coaching stipends, travel, and IEP accommodations. Going forward, we hope to also offer spring programs, and of course, fall programs as well. Rejected funds, the initial funds for startup equipment, so on and so forth, is about $24,000. That is something that we have been told by the Special Olympics that we could reach out to and apply for, and the funding could be available for that, but this is just an idea of where we're at going forward. So action steps going forward, right now, we do have our winter registration open, and one of the reasons that we have that open for is to start to get that interest in, to see what programs we can offer, what programs we can't offer, and to make sure that we're getting that feedback. The other idea here is that we have our students, you know, one of the differences here is that there are going to be IEP accommodations that we have to meet, and we are going to do that to make sure that we are a 100% inclusive program. And then, of course, we would have interest meetings, coach approvals at the board meetings, and we hope to begin this December 16th. Does anybody have any questions for me at the moment? I tried to be brief, I'm not good at that. Alright.
Great. Good job, thank you Mr. Rutledge, thank you Ms. Perone for all the work that you have done on this initiative and on your presentation this evening. So we look forward to your action steps, taking some action, and again, initiative for our students. So, thank you very much. Mr. Castellano, this concludes the superintendent's report for November.
Thank you Dr. Grucci, that was a wonderful report, and just, again, great to see all of our students and staff, and to celebrate them. We don't have our student reps with us tonight, but I think we had so many students here that maybe that sort of made up for it a little bit. So, if it's alright with everyone, we're going to go ahead into Finance and Operations.
First public comment, Mr. Castellano?
Oh, that's right. I, at this time, before we do that, we are going to take comments on agenda items only. So if anyone has comments on agenda items only, I'll go ahead and give the guidelines for that, if we have any of those. Sorry about that, I guess I'm in work meeting mode, I almost skipped over that. Any comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will have another comment period at the end of the meeting for any, any subject. Okay, so with that, we'll move to Finance and Operations, and I'm going to ask for a motion on 7.1 through 7.18, please.
Summate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion, please. I have an item that I've wanted to discuss.
Sure.
In regards to Finance and Operations, I want to get the status on the weapon-free school zone signs and the drug-free school zone signs that we've talked about for at least a year, and I know that we've gone through a couple of different administrations at the township and so on and so forth, but I think we need to get this show on the road. Maybe we can get an update on it, find out what's going on with it. It's been discussed in Finance and Operations a couple of times, and I just wanted to find out where we are with it.
No problem, I mean, you did ask for an update after our last Finance Committee, so I know Dr. Grucci and I have a meeting with the Township scheduled, hopefully for next week, if our schedules line up and the stars line up, and we'll be able to follow up on that for our next committee meeting.
Okay, so we'll have an update at our next Finance and Operations Committee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Any other discussion on Finance and Operations? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
There it is, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Abstain on 7.18, yes to the rest.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move into Curriculum. Can I have a motion on 8.1 through 8.3, please? Motion?
Second. Was that Mr. Ireland's motion? Just to clarify, thank you.
Any discussion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Moving on to Personnel. Can I have a motion for?
Summate.
9.1 through 9.7. We have those motions?
I did not catch who that was, I was waiting, sorry. 9 went to 9.7.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
No to 10.2, yes to everything else.
9-1 through 9.7 is a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, and I believe that at this time, we have the great pleasure of introducing our new hires.
Okay, thank you Mr. Castellano, please join me in welcoming the following new employees as we welcome them together to the Egg Harbor Township School District, and I'll begin with Jill Boorman, Special Education Teacher, MD High School. Erin Harrington, School North at Davenport. Beverly Wilson, Teacher at the High School. Connie McInnis, Bus Aide in our Transportation Department. Welcome Patricia Tuckert, Bus Aide in our Transportation Department. Krista Brazzulli, Talons Support Staff from Talons Park. Infinity Sutton Epps, Talons Support Staff. Chelsea Laurent, Talons Support Staff. Morgan Calhoun, LLD Program Paraprofessional at Miller School. Tammy Powowski, Ratio Paraprofessional at Miller School. And Daniela Sifilova Avalos, MD Program Paraprofessional at Miller School. Congratulations and welcome to our school district.
Welcome, welcome guys, thank you very much for being here and this evening, and welcome to the district. With that, we are going to move into New Business. So, 10.1, we know what that is. I'm going to ask... Okay, do we need... Okay, do we need to read any of these in more detail, since these are new additions to the agenda?
If you want, the business administrator or I could certainly read them out loud.
Were you doing a consent agenda, is that why? Or are we doing each individual one? It depends.
Well, since we sort of, let's, let's read, let's just read 10, 2, 3, and 4, and then we can vote on them together.
Okay. So, 10.1, Nature Reserve Turkey Trot, Egg Harbor Township School District bus request by the Township. Motion 10.2 is to approve a motion to approve, approve a motion, to approve a discipline, I'll change that, discussed in Executive Session. 10.3, Resolution to Agree to the EHT EA Sidebar for Unified Sports Stipends, and 10.4 is to approve the settlement agreement as discussed in Executive Session.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure we, you know, we're very clear as to what we're doing on that, so with that, I'll ask for a motion on 10.1 through 10.4, please.
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
No to 10.2, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Abstaining from 10.3, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Now, can I have a motion on 11.1, please? Ms. Halkelko, is there anything that you need to read on 11.1?
I would just ask the Board to affirm the HIB determinations as discussed in Executive Session for JD MO1, AO1, FO1, HS O1, and O2, all 21, 22, as discussed in Executive Session.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Communications, we have a new board calendar. Only a few meetings left now in December, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Delabarka to give us any new... us any new updates from last week from New Jersey School Boards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reminder that our next Atlantic County School Board Association meeting is on December 9th, in-person is at 6 o'clock, virtual at 7 o'clock, and our meeting at that time is at the Atlantic City Country Club, and the topic is regionalization. We are inviting new board members to that meeting, so as soon as we get all the information, we'll be inviting them also to attend so that they can become familiar with how the Atlantic County School Boards Association operates. Also, just a reminder to all the board members that the School Board, New Jersey School Board Association Workshop is now available, they extended the date to December 28th. So if you would like to go back and see any programs that you weren't able to attend during the workshop week, the opportunity is there now to everybody till December 28th. And I know, Mr. President, that you have the Donald G. Assembly this Saturday, that you and Mrs. Byrd will be attending, or Mrs. Tamika?
Mr. Floyd and I, yes.
And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delabarka. Okay, at this point, now we are going to open it up for a public comment on any subject. Please give your name and address for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Just to remind everyone, we cannot discuss personnel or litigation, and it may be if you have a complicated question, we may need to get back to you with a full answer. And for our new hires, if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome, but if you want to get home for Tuesday Night Football, you won't hurt our feelings. So. There's no Tuesday Night Football. Yeah, thanks.
Sonia Cruz, 207 Egan Avenue. Yes, the Project Grad tickets were sold out. All 200 tickets were sold. We definitely want to thank board members, especially the school, that email that was sent out. Really, my phone blew up, so teachers, staff, transportation, senior parents, the community. I totally appreciate, because I usually spend the last week in the cold selling tickets, but I think people are, you know, nice to me today, so I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. My first question was about, like, the bus drivers and the shortage in the cafeteria. Have we thought about possibly cross-training and having some of the bus drivers actually, can they work in the cafeteria to fill in some gaps between their runs? So that's just a thought I had. And then I have a question about Kelly Services. I want someone to please confirm that, that, that company's requirement is that anyone hired through them has to be vaccinated? So if you can clarify that, and how we are handling that? There's only two questions right now.
Okay, thank you. We'll get right to that, and I turn it over to Dr. Gruccio. I think it's the other way around. I think we're looking for anyone who can possibly drive a bus to help us with that because we are really short on bus drivers.
Yeah, I do understand, but.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Gruccio, because we are doing a lot of cross-training.
Okay, regarding Kelly Services, we're going to go right to the source, Dr. Charlton, because you just had this conversation with Kelly Services, so you're on.
Yes, we did. And basically, Kelly Services fall under the same executive order that our employees do, so what they do is they share with us a spreadsheet of all their employees that are vaccinated and approved to work in the schools. If they decide not to be vaccinated, again, same as our employees, they are required to submit testing, and they give a test result once a week. Our long-term subs and our building permanent subs do that with Rover Labs the same way we do. And then per diem subs, because they're not necessarily here on the day that Rover Labs is here, they have to carry with them results of a negative test.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Am I right on the cross-training, Dr. Gruccio?
Yes.
So basically, our, our greatest need is, is getting people driving buses.
Correct, yes. We need, we are in need of bus drivers. We're down 12 now, and we're down three and a half substitutes, so you can spread the word that we definitely need bus drivers, and as I shared with the Board, our office staff and transportation, they're out doing runs. We have bus drivers that are doing runs and turning around and doing another run in the same timeframe, and we have mechanics in line to drive buses next. So spread the word, we need bus drivers.
Thank you.
Okay, and then lastly, some of these questions that I come up here and I ask are questions that individuals reach out to me to ask because they know I do attend meetings. So this is going to bring me back to a policy that I have asked several times for you to consider as a board, and that's a policy 9.140, the Citizens Advisory Committee. I've asked several times that we take this committee into consideration, especially when we talk about being transparent, when we talk about engaging parents and engaging the community, recognizing the stakeholders, the amount of talent we have in our district, and the amount of people that want to help and want to serve. So again, I've asked several times that you guys please consider to allow this committee to happen. You talk about making your committee, your policy committees and all those other committees, you go back and forth on, do we allow people to attend, do we not allow them to attend? This gives you an opportunity to allow somebody from this committee to probably sit, because ideally, there's a lot that needs to be done. Ideally, it's not going to be done instantly, it's not going to be done with just the Board. It needs to be done with the community. So again, I urge you, if you don't know the policy, please read the policy, please consider putting this policy in effect. Thank you.
I do appreciate that. That has come up a number of times, and I'm going to give the same answer. The Citizens Advisory Committee policy is designed to put a group together to consider a specific subject area. So if we were going to look at, I'm just going to make, you know, if we were going to look at new school colors, I'm just making something up, or a new mascot, we would consider using a Citizens Advisory Committee to advise us on that particular topic. But what we have been doing, instead of that, though we still have that as a tool, we've been using our strategic planning process, which we're going to be starting in January. We're supposed to do that in the fall. We weren't able to do it in the fall because there were just many, many things going on. So that was the, that's what our strategic planning mechanism is for. Our Citizens Advisory Policy is designed to get input on a specific topic. If the Board would like to change it and make it something else, that's, that's for the Board to decide, and we can certainly do that. I'd like to have everybody get their first question in first, and then we'll, we'll go, we'll go around again, if that's okay?
I don't think there's anybody else.
Is there, is there anyone else? I'm just, I just want to check.
Go ahead, I'll wait for you guys. It's actually funny that you brought that up, sorry. Regina Bonjorna, 405 Starfish Lane. I was actually going to ask the question about the strategic planning, because I know that that was canceled to be rescheduled, and also the equity training that was mentioned, the public could attend. So I just wanted to see when the anticipated dates were. Also, we were advised that the students would be testing for, to see their potential learning loss, and I was wondering when the parents would be made aware of the assessments and where we could access the, the results. And then last week, I don't know, I kind of went back and looked at the meeting on YouTube, there was mention of the pre-K expansion that would be funded both by state and local, and that was like the first time that I've actually heard the word "local" funding. So I wanted to know if there was any more information on that, and like if the public would be made aware of how much of the local funds would be going towards the pre-K. And that was about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to let Dr. Gruccio answer that, and perhaps starting, going from last to first. The local funding of pre-K that is often discussed is that which we were already required to provide to our special needs population. But I'm going to let Dr. Gruccio take it from there and go back.
You covered that because you had pre-K previously, and the local funds carried that, the grant is the expansion. So that's that. You said we're going backwards, is that what you said? I'm going to go by memory, and I know I'm going to forget one, all right?
Learning loss.
So one strategic plan, that is going to be for the new board to decide. We meet as a team, and we discuss what, what dates, and, you know, usually we look for Tuesdays, but it depends how the board calendar is going to flow out between board meetings, work sessions, committee, committee meetings, and the board trainings that, that will be held in Board Retreat format. So that, that information will be decided when the new board meets. You asked about assessments. I know the assessments haven't completed, Ms. Moss, do you have information on that in terms of details and timelines? I know the parent portal helps.
So the learning loss, I think that you're referring to is the state issued the Start Strong assessments. So we have, we have access to those results through a portal through Pearson. I do believe that there is a parent portal feature, so we will communicate that out, but they didn't have individualized student reports ready until they said November. So we will communicate that out, but we had access to that data and were able to see it on a, like, grade level, and teachers could go in and see their individual student results, the questions and standards that way, of where the students from last year's standards.
And regarding the Equity Training, Administration has been participating in Equity Training after began in September, there was an October session, there was just a November session, and the Board was scheduled in September, that was postponed until January when the new board comes onboard. So that'll be another night that the Board, new Board will meet and be trained in Equity from the same constituents that we are, we are learning from presently.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else?
Andrea Fuglecy, 28 Shoreline Road. I've sent several emails, had meetings regarding the dust shields, just trying to get clarification on why we're the only school that still uses them. When I came in September, I was told by Dr. Gruccio that it's up to the teacher's discretion to use them. That's not true. Couple of weeks ago, I was told it's, we follow COVID protocols daily, and then today, about a half an hour before the meeting, I received an email that pandemic team will decide what to do in a couple of weeks. If it's the pandemic's team's decision, why haven't we talked to them sooner? And I'm not quite sure why we're having them make a decision like that, because I don't think we need them. I think many people think that they don't need them. And I think just, I'm getting the runaround and not getting an answer, so the sooner the better would be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment on that. Is there anything you'd like to add? Dr. Gruccio, I understand that you did receive communication from our central office just today.
Yes, and I'd like to clarify something. I never said that it was up to the teachers to decide, it was the teacher's discretion. There were teachers who asked for them, and if they felt more comfortable, we provided the dust shields for them. That's how that went down. Regarding the emails, yes, emails were, were answered, and yes, the pandemic team is more of one voice. It's a collective voice of stakeholders, teachers, parents, students, union president, and it's all of us who will collectively have a discussion, as we do every 30 to 60 days, and that, that's what's required. So we have, as I stated in my presentation, there's an administrators' meeting tomorrow. We have a discussion with, with the principals, and they will begin setting up their meetings so that all the stakeholders who participate in the pandemic team and represent others within the EHT school community can have a voice and can have a discussion, and that's what we do. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anyone else before we, Mrs. Cruz, come on, come on back up.
So with all due respect, Mr. President, the line that is particular in this policy is it says that Citizens Advisory Committees are particularly useful in keeping the Board of Education and Administration informed with regard to community opinion and representing the community in the study of specific school problems. So I'm here to tell you that there are problems. So if you want me to come at the next meeting with a specific list of problems that I think as a community, as the Board, as Administration, that we can start to address, then I will be very prepared to do that. If that doesn't, if that doesn't, if that's not helpful, then I'm asking that we look at this committee over and decide to step out of the box and include citizens, students in the decision-making. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's what we're doing right here, right now. But I, I hear you, I understand, and we'll, we'll, we'll look at that again. You know, again, as you read from the policy, if there are specific issues that we should form a committee to look at, we're absolutely open to that. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We thank you for that, and I'll see if there are board member comments.
I have a comment, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Okay. I wanted to address the Citizens Advisory Committee. When I first ran for the Board, I pledged that I would try to get the community more involved with what it is that we do, and then the pandemic came. I know we had various discussions, rode back, projects that were discussed. I think we need to get that back on course and get that going again. And as far as the Citizens Advisory Committee, I think it's a great idea, but we just need something specific that it is that we want to look at, or we could, you know, just put something out there that is more broad-banded, so to speak, but I, I think a committee is, is more or less something that you focus on a specific issue, as the President alluded to, but I'm for becoming more active with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I think we should find something that we could put that to use. So that's my comments on that. I also wanted to thank Ms. Cruz for addressing the Project Graduation that's coming up, the raffle tickets. I know I got my raffle ticket, and I think the drawing is 24th at 6:00 PM?
24th at 6:00 PM.
At the high school?
Yeah, and we got, we'll livestream it through our Facebook page.
Okay, so you need not be present to win?
Absolutely not.
Okay, and then I think there was one more thing I wanted to discuss, but, okay, well that's it. That's my comments, and again, I think that's something that you brought up was an excellent idea, and we'll take that under advisement, so, thank you.
Any other board members? Mrs. Solagi?
Has the Policy Committee looked at this policy and discussed it?
Yes, we've discussed it on a number of occasions.
Are you saying that the wording needs to be changed to include the public without a specific concern? I don't understand, if, if we have this policy, how come we're not doing it?
So, let me let Mrs. Houck go, and I mean, I'll, I'm just, I'll repeat it, because I don't seem to be getting through. Go ahead, Mrs. Houck.
So what the policy does is it says the Board may establish Advisory Committees as standing committees to serve in a liaison function between the local community and the school, as permanent committees for funded programs as the law requires and as the need arises. So you have the ability at any time to, as a Board, create an Advisory Committee typically on a specific topic or area of interest. So we had discussed that, I know years ago in the Policy Committee that it's there, it's there for a purpose, and at any time the Board as a whole could create, if there's a specific reason. and at any time, the board as a whole could create, if there's a specific reason to have one, certainly create a Citizens Advisory Committee. And at any time, the Policy Committee can look at it again and have discussion.
So again, if there's a specific topic that the community wants addressed through a committee, and the board agrees that that's the right forum to go through, as opposed to our normal channels, our, our meetings, as well as our strategic planning, if there's a need for another forum, that policy gives us the ability to establish a Citizens Advisory Committee. Is there a topic that you would suggest a committee be formed to look at at this time? Well, yeah, I'm just trying to respond to your question.
Obviously, Mrs. Cruz has some concerns from the public. I, my concern is class size, which we discussed at the last meeting. Yeah, there are some concerns that I think the public's concerned about.
I'll tell you what, Mrs. Cruz, I'll give you a call tomorrow, and we'll have a discussion. And then I'll, I'll share with the board the concerns. Does that work?
Thank you.
I also have a check for you. Thanks.
Thank you.
For project graduation, make that clear.
Any other board members? Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to add to that, that this board is really concerned about what the public has to say. And Dr. Gruccio, over the last, under her reign, we have had the town hall meetings, when we were discussing, you know, having full-day kindergarten and expanding different things, and the whole community. I think we had 10 teams, we went into teams of like 10, and we had probably 20 teams there. So we had about 200 people that came out to discuss a specific thing. So maybe we want to look at the, possibly you bringing us some concerns, and then maybe have a town hall meeting again, so the whole public, instead of picking out five or 10 people from the community, opening up more to, for a specific reason.
Any other board members? Mrs. Alabarda?
I love that the public is involved, and I'll be involved when I'm on the other side, too. I also want to remind everyone, there's a little misinformation. Matilda Junior is on Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 and Sunday at 2:00. These kids have been working very hard. So come out and watch. It's, I think, $3 for students, $5 for adults. I could be wrong on that, though.
Any other board members? Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. I love the idea of having more community input. I think that it's important to stay goal-focused, bringing in lots of different viewpoints so that it's productive, the meetings are productive, and we, if we think about, say, for example, what Ms. Solagi brought up with class rank as maybe a focus, that makes great sense to see what the community feedback is. I imagine the community wants smaller class sizes. I can't imagine too much debate over larger class sizes. But that opens us up to the possibility, if we're going to open up Policy Committee meetings to the public, then we should also open up Finance Committee meetings, because they will be paying for those class sizes to be reduced, and then our other committees. So we have to make sure with that policy that it's written in a way that the outcome is a positive one, and it, we get good results that work for the community. So that's my comment on that. But I really wanted to say that the unified presentation actually brought me to tears, because my aunt had Down Syndrome, and she wasn't able to participate in any real school activities. She was able to go to school to a certain point, but none of those doors were open for her. And so to be part of a district that is placing such wealth of experience for all kids makes me proud to be a parent in this district, makes me proud to be a board member, and it's probably my favorite thing in the last three years. So thank you. I'm very proud. Thank you. My aunt thanks you from heaven.
Any other board members? Seeing none, administration, any final thoughts? Okay, excellent meeting. I want to wish everyone a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. We will see you in December. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Summate.
Second.
By acclamation, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.